Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 11, 2023 meeting of the Wednesday council. Okay, we only have four people here tonight. I don't think we found anybody on Zoom yet, have we yet? Okay, so we just barely made it quarrel. Right, the first item on the agenda is consideration of purchasing policy.
We're gonna do the council for the budget of lesions.
We are gonna do the budget of lesions. What I would do, have you remind me? I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
I would propose we have a moment of silence for everyone that was lost in nine eleven.
Okay, here we go. May the rest in peace. We're starting in. Suggested consideration of the purchasing policy. Oh, we're gonna do the three-minute public commentary. Okay, so we'll do the three-minute public comment period. Does anyone have anything to say on any subject? Okay. Public comment period has not been taken advantage of. We'll move on. Yeah. Okay, so now we need the recognition of the yarn bombers. I understand a few of those folks are here. And they've been waiting quite a while for this. So. Let's see. Mary. Dyer. Carol Grover. Barb Dawson.
She's ill tonight, so couldn't come.
Okay.
I can change your floor.
Yeah. Would you like to get into the class?
Oh, no.
Okay, Pam Taylor. There you go.
Hey, y'all, y'all get together there.
Hold up her flag. Yep.
There it goes.
All right.
I'm here. It's just really loud in the background, so I'm muting myself.
All right, now we thank you for your service.
So, for those of us who are not familiar, we are yarn bombers. Maybe be nice if these ladies talk a little bit about who they are and what they did. Let me grab your mic.
Andy, I don't know if you heard me, but I'm here. It's just really loud in the background, so I'm muting myself.
The record show Lydus is on Zoom.
We knit scarves, colorful scarves, that were wrapped around a lot of trees in the town winter, just to make it a little cheerful. It was Linda Lincoln's, I believe, idea. She just asked some of us that she knew who knit to do it. And we did it.
This is during COVID.
This was during COVID. I was born and brought up in this town, so.
Me too.
And she too. I lived over six years of my life here, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, be sure to thank you for your good cheer and all the message you pulled during that time.
Thank you.
Now we can move to the consideration of purchasing policy.
So I need to make a few introductory remarks.
Sure.
Wonderful. So. First of all, I want to introduce Deb Nichols, who is our executive assistant. I asked Deb to be here tonight because her work on this was really invaluable. We solicited policies from all over the state, and I gave Deb the task of sort of working, pulling some of those together and coming up with the first draft. And I gave her that on a Tuesday, but Wednesday she had the first draft done. And so I'm thankful to the, thankful to her, first of all, for all of her able assistance, but I'm also thankful to the council for creating that position in the budget, because I can tell you unequivocally that she has helped to increase my productivity, because she's able to take on so many things that would otherwise take up a lot of my time, and it has really allowed me to focus on higher level priorities. And this was what you guys recently listed as your top priority. And so, as I said, we studied policies from other towns. We did get input from our department directors. We previously served this to you. And so if I were to summarize this, I would just say that this policy includes four levels of purchasing. And the first one up to $5,000 is what we consider smaller field purchases, and so there's no procedural requirements for that. But when you get from 5,000 to 99, $9,999, we are required a minimum of three written or documented verbal quotes. The next level from 10,000 to 25,000, you, again, we're soliciting at least a minimum of three quotes, but we might do it in some more formal ways, such as doing some internet research or asking them to send us a quote, or you could even with this potentially issue a formal bid process with that. And then lastly, for contracts that are $25,000 and above, we will go through a formal request or proposal process, whether we're seeking proposals, bids, or qualifications from a vendor. If we are making multiple purchases from the same vendor, and over the course of a year, that equals $25,000 or more, we will, we will we will seek that vendor through this request or proposal process. So we don't want anyone trying to skirt this by making a bunch of, you know, $4,500 purchases, and then it ends up with, you know, $30,000 purchases from the same vendor over the course of a year. If you approve this tonight, and as I said, I shared this with you previously, and some of you offered some really good feedback and input on this, it would take effect immediately, although I will say this is the formal bidding process is the process that we've already been using when it comes to things like the purchase of our heating fuel and our gasoline, of our revaluation. And very shortly, by the end of this week, we hope to also issue a RFP for banking services. So we've already sort of adopted, we want to formalize this so that all of our department directors know what the rules are in order to procure either goods or services.
I just had one other question. On this, on the the purchases of stuff, of goods or services less than 5,000, does that mean that's within their budgets, correct, within the department budget? So if they're, you know, they're not above the budget to say, well, I, I don't have to get authorization because it's 5,000, you know, less than 5,000 dollars.
Yeah, that's correct. Everyone is still going to have to work within the parameters of their budgets. And we get a month of report from, from Bernice. And that, everyone puts that and just makes sure that they're on track with their expenses.
Okay.
Go ahead. One of the things, I've read through it now, obviously, I've worked back and forth, you know. One thing that I would hope to see is the 10,000 to 25,000 dollar the informal competitive bidding section. I would like to see the, the council have some sort of input on that of whether or not a particular, depending on what it is, the count, I would like to have the council see some input of whether or not that could be sent through the informal bid process, or what you've got listed in here is informal bid process or the bid process. I know that it is in the, the upper, the 25,000 dollars and above. There's a whole, it automatically goes into the formal bid process where the council has a, has a part of it. I would like to see a discussion, initial council discussion in the 10 to 25,000.
That's actually another question I, I have too, is in purchases of the 10 to 25,000, is this, again, is this items that they already had authorization to, to purchase, or are they, is it something comes up and they say, well, you know, we really need this, so I don't need to go through, you know, the council or the town manager, I can just go ahead and do it. I guess that's the question I have, is this, is this stuff, what we're talking about here, is this, you know, purchases of, of, of goods or services that have already been approved in the budget? Or are these goods and services that they can make the determination that they may need during the course of the year, and then they just purchase it?
So, so one of the things about the budget is, you know, when we go through that exercise, we never know what's going to crop up over the course of the ensuing 12 months. And so inevitably, things happen that we couldn't have perceived during the budgeting process there. And then, Linda, it becomes just a matter of priorities. And so if you, if you encounter a need, and you're going to have to spend on that need in a way that you did not anticipate during the budgeting process, that means you're going to have to not spend on some other need that you may have planned to, and, and, and so both budgeting and spending are always a matter of priorities. And the most important thing is that we work again within the parameters of the budget that the council has, has accrued. And so, and so, for instance, if we decide, you know, we need to, we need to buy new computers for a certain department, and we hadn't really planned on that, well, that means that we're going to have to reduce costs on some other cost center within that department. And that might mean not filling up vacancy as quickly. It might mean purchasing fewer goods and services. Otherwise, it might mean making do with something for a year longer than what we had anticipated. So, 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 so this purchasing policy is, does not preclude someone, or does not give someone the permission to bust their budget. They're still, they're still using these guidelines within the parameters of their department budget.
Right, but I also know how budgeting works. If they didn't get something they wanted, potentially, they come back at, you know, well, we can do this, we have a little bit of leeway here. I'm just saying is when the bigger ticket items, we got to be careful, because when, you know, if during the course of the year, purchases are made, and the other purchases weren't made, someone's going to have to answer to that. And I guess that's, that's, you know, when you're, someone's got to keep an eye on stuff. This is, this can't be just, you know, in my opinion, it can't be a free-for-all, because you're going to have people that say, well, you know, I could really use this this year, but I'm going to push this on for the next year. That's not what we've talked about, you know, within the budget process. So I, I, you got to be careful. I fully agree, we need this purchasing po- policy, but I you, someone's going to have to police this, because I can assure you that when budget season comes around, and you've said you needed something this time, and there's five items on there, and then we come back next year, and those five items haven't been bought, but you bought these five items over here, that's going to be a problem. So that's, and I guess I don't know how, you know.
So actually, this document really working in coordination with two other documents. One is the budget, but the other is also the capital improvement plan. So if you're, so under our capital improvement plan, anything that is purchased above $5,000 should be part of that capital improvement plan. And as you guys know, we look at what items on that plan we're going to purchase over the course of and so, and so anytime we're spending, you know, 10,000, 50,000, 25,000, those are going to most likely be capital, either capital purchases, or there are going to be some sort of service that is fairly important, let's say likely large, for instance. And so and so, again, these guidelines will apply to those purchases. But, but, but you're still working within the parameters of both the capital improvement program and the budget. And, and you know, it's well within the council's right, if, if the department director says, you know, we're budgeting to purchase these three widgets. And then, as it turns out, they don't buy the widgets, they buy something else, they buy guns and butter instead. And then, and then they come back the next year and say, oh, we need these three widgets. And you can say, well, you know, we actually budgeted that for you last year, and so, you know, maybe we're going to budget one or two widgets, or make zero widgets. So those are always things that are within the council's burden.
But again, someone's got to keep an eye on this.
Well, I think that's what you have a town manager and a finance director.
I think that's the idea of this whole purchasing.
No, I know, I know, but I'm just saying is keep an eye on, but again, you see what I'm saying is when departments have leeway and what they can do within the departments, someone's got to be policing that, so to make sure that we don't get too far off track.
Right, and policing is kind of what this.
No, I know, it is, but I'm just saying is.
I think we have a discern between the method by which we purchase things, which is the purchasing policy, and permission to purchase. Okay, so the purchasing policy describes how you're going to do that, not whether or not you can do that. Not authorization to do that.
That's where that $10,000 or up piece, it brings it in, so we have the, brings it in front of the council for discussion, so we have the ability to talk about the purpose and need and whatever of, you know, whether or not we would like to see a purchase and have a, have a discussion over it.
So just so I have a better understanding, how might you envision that, that work? Because, because at the same time, we want, we want to have guidelines, but we don't want to slow things down to the point that we have, that we're putting off a purchase for, for a month.
Well, I would just, you know, I think it, and maybe it's a, you know, just a discussion, quick discussion of whether or not, you know, this particular item goes out, you know, maybe it's $22,000. And it goes out for a formal bid. I mean, there's some stuff that works better with a formal bid or, or with an informal bid than others. Some stuff a formal bid is, you know, vehicles, stuff like that, it's real easy to get through the formal bid process. And it's effective. Whereas some of, some other stuff, it may not be, and we'd just say, go to the informal process to not slow it down.
Yeah, so let me just, if I have any questions about something, I have a lot of confidence in this group, and so I will reach out to, to say, you know, hey, what do y'all think of this? And, and too, you know, like you said, Aaron Roy was really helpful in this. And as it was, whenever we were issuing the, the fuel and gasoline RFP, and so I think that your, your idea, for instance, of sharing these RFPs before they, before they're published, just to see if someone on the council has a special knowledge that they might be able to blend some input into that. I think that's a really good idea. So I'm, I'm happy to make use of that help, and so, and so I'm happy to do that if something costs less than 25,000 dollars, well.
But overall, I think this was a great policy. And I like to see things like this that we have right in our own self.
Yeah, and, and also, assuming that you guys approve this, and I think Elizabeth mentioned this at long point here, we will post this on our website so that everyone knows the rules of engagement when it comes to purchasing for the, for the town.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, that brings us to the subject of, if Elizabeth's up there behind me has any comments?
No, she's waving us off.
Okay, and then I think the only person that hasn't had a chance to speak besides myself, Shannon.
Oh, I don't have any comments.
Okay, I, I have a couple very good questions, okay. Is there a way this policy to ensure that multiple churches purchases from different subcontractors who are, in effect, subordinate to the prime subcontractor, aren't used to disenfranchise the policy? Did you get that?
So, so this hasn't happened in the town, but it may have happened at a place that worked at in Texas, where it was the, the the purchasing department was on to many department directors who were not quite as smart as they thought they were, and they thought that they could skirt the purchasing policy by making, you know, 10 purchases from the same vendor without having to go through the competitive bidding process. And so, and so that, so, so that's what the purpose of this is, is we just want to put our directors on the warning that, please don't try that, because we're going to be watching.
And there's actually a statement in there on there.
Then, yeah, there's a, just an editing issue. It says, I think in page five, mention personal property. And it's really business personal property tax. Just an editing issue.
So, I'm looking at a point toward that, is, please.
I don't have, I didn't bring it in, I figured we're going to get it.
It's, it's in your back, right?
On page five?
Chapter five.
Section five.
Section five. Then somebody backs out there in the audience.
Number eight, local preference. The second, last line on page five.
Pay personal property taxes.
It's just set to say business personal property debt. We don't have personal property taxes.
No.
And then, that's really all I have. I just want to be sure this policy leaves us in a position to coordinate. I know that the school system has a, has a purchasing policy, and I really wouldn't want this to interfere with our building, the bottom of school. That's the only other thing.
No, so, so in that instance, for instance, we talked about the possibility of purchasing diesel gas, diesel fuels.
Right.
And so that's another thing where we, because of the, the cost of the the commodity, we would actually put that out for bid, and it would be a joint bid proposal from the school and the town. So, so.
I just want to be sure that the policies are close enough, that we can do that kind of thing.
Well, yeah, and so, and so the school superintendent has, you know, been really great to work with, and is.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
In trying to find some way that, that we can partner and realize some cost efficiencies naturally with.
Okay, are there any, any questions or comments? And the chair will entertain a motion.
I motion to accept the purchasing policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Final, so, we'll call Linda, myself, Shannon Roy, and Elizabeth in favor. The other staff. Okay. Item 157, consideration of extending the moratorium on mineral exploration, mineral extraction, rock quarry excavation, sand and gravel pit activities. Any motion or discussion?
I'll motion to extend the moratorium on mineral exploration, mineral extraction, rock quarry excavation, and sand and gravel pit activities.
One second.
Okay, discussion?
I just want to say something. On this, we talked about, potentially talking about the sand and gravel pit activities. We're going to probably have to talk about that at some point, so I don't know, I just want to put this on an agenda item for, in, in the future, just that one portion of it. Because that is an issue that I, I've heard from folks, so that's something that we might want to, you know, kind of separate out.
I would be on board with that.
And talk about that, because that's something, that's a real concern. You've got, you know, building going on and everything, and you're, you're kind of putting a complete kibosh on some of these, these activities. I think it's going to potentially impact that, so I think we need to revisit that at some point.
Anthony, what's the timeframe? Do we have any timeframe on when this ordinance may be ready?
So, work on this, we'll begin on Wednesday night. Joel Reed, who is the planning director for Katie Cott, will be here working the planning work. And we've shared with Joel what the feedback was from our prior discussion.
Right.
And and Joel's, and Joel's already done some research for, for other ordinances across the state. And his estimation is that that will probably take four or five months in order to do, which would fit within this timeline. So what I would say is, if you folks have some feedback specific to sand and gravel, mind them. Then we need to know about that now, so that we can incorporate that or not into the ordinance.
I, I think we have to, we have to have an understanding as how that's going to impact building, or, you know, I don't know a lot about it, but septic or any of that stuff, how does this impact that? I mean, because if we have folks in the town that need gravel or, you know, whatever, for different, you know, building, buildings or whatever they're doing, I guess that's a question I have, how does this impact it? And I don't know that question, so I need to have some information. I'm totally fine with the, the moratorium and the other stuff, but I, the sand gravel, that's a whole different area. I think that we need to be careful that, you know, with respect to that, that area, so I guess I, I need more information.
Is there a way to extend the moratorium on the mineral exploration, the rest of it, other than the sand and gravel?
You could do that, but it would, it would take some editing of this document that's in front of them. And I don't, I don't know if that's something that we want to do on the plan. So, so Linda, let me make sure I understand your, is your concern, are we looking beyond six months or within this coming six months?
No, I, I, I just, as a whole, I think we need to understand how does that impact building in this town, and, you know, if we put a moratorium on, on, you know, gravel and, and sand gravel pits, how does that impact building? How does it impact building? I don't know. And how does that impact activities that, that, you know, use the sand and gravel pits? I just don't know enough about it, so that's why I'm asking that, that we need some more information on that. And I guess I'm, I'm not sure that I want to send or don't want to include that, but again, I don't have enough information about that one. And I've heard from different people on that, that this is an issue, so.
So it's my understanding that this will be, that piece of it will be included in the ordinance, correct?
So the ordinance will remain as it has for the past four, five-plus months, for the next six months moving forward, yes. So, and, and I wouldn't know that either, Linda. I think we, you know, we may need to reach out to some contractors to see whatever is proposed, how that might impact their businesses and then such on businesses that rely upon sand and gravel, and so and again, I'm working from memory, but my, my recollection is that the the council was really concerned about making sure there were proper setbacks from things like streams and residential neighborhoods. And also that once a sand pit is played out, that it's re-budgeted. Because right now, you know, you're just left with a dirty hole in the ground.
I'm fine with extending moratorium on all of it. I just think that we need to get some more information on that one aspect.
Okay, Shannon, are you in there?
Um, no, kind of with Linda.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, I've said from the beginning, I don't have a problem with the sand and gravel pits, and as they're operational, as long as, like we had talked about, they, they follow the setback laws, they follow the the water safety laws that are already in place. But we, my biggest concern was with the blasting and excavation of blasted rock, and that, especially in a neighborhood where it can affect their aquifers or their residences. So that has been my major concern from the beginning. I'm not as concerned with having a moratorium on sand and gravel pits. But I know that we can't, as Anthony said, we cannot do the But I know that we can't, as Anthony said, we cannot do the. Uh motion on the fly and re-edit it on the fly, cause then we're just gonna end up screwing it up, so. I think that if we just move forward with the moratorium and then maybe come back. Once we have more information, maybe have a special meeting to augment that moratorium to reflect only the blasting. And the more uh the more concerning aspects of the mining, that would be, that would be, I think, acceptable.
Yep.
Okay, I um do not support an extension of the moratorium. As it concerns uh sand and gravel excavation, I would support extension of the moratorium. As it as it concerns blasting and crushing, okay? Um so if I had to vote at this point, my vote would be no. Okay, the the two items need to be separated, I don't, I I am not. At all pleased to find out that we've got a moratorium for six months and absolutely nothing has been done, I I think that. You know, if if I were the landowner, I'd be like. Okay, I don't think it's fair. Um so we can table this or we can look, we can table it and see if we can.
When does this, when does the current moratorium run out?
The current moratorium expires on September thirtieth, so we are planning on meeting September twenty fifth, so if there was. If goes the will of the council, we could ask our legal counsel just to remove the portion dealing with sand and gravel activities. From this and and return with this on September the twenty fifth.
I think that's acceptable, yeah.
Would, I like that. Is that, is the, one of the things that I that that concerns me with the sand and gravel as well as the rock crushing. Is uh mon- the monitoring and enforcement, and if we pull that out of there, is that gonna be? The sand and gravel um piece of it, is that gonna be part of the new ordinance still, or? We're just lifting the moratorium on it, they can go.
See, that's that's the thing, yeah, I think that that's, that is a, that is a concern.
Well.
That is why people raise that concern.
Yeah, if we lift the moratorium on a sandy gravel. Um that doesn't mean that it can't be adjusted along with the uh blasting and crushing.
Well, that's that's.
Okay, but we're just gonna say the gravel, you know. Lift the moratorium on the sand and gravel.
The more concerning piece to me, and I think a a good portion of people in town, is certainly the blasting and and rock mine.
Right.
Um but there are some pieces to the sand and gravel thing that should be, I mean, we, a plan for monitoring and enforcement on all the activities. Uh you know, this stuff of this person, you know, it's it's their job, it's their job, oh, I didn't know I was supposed to do it, that's gonna stop, we need clear. Concise uh direction as to who's monitoring it and who is supposed to be enforcing the, when when the rules are broken.
Well, he's like, I have a code enforcement officer at this point, who would be responsible to monitor that? Uh we have lots of neighbors that are gonna be keeping an eye on it. And um uh we just hired an executive decision for codes, who um we're open. They will be able to give our code officers more time to do these kinds of things. And so spending the regulation on a great sand gravel for six months isn't the end of the world, it's a few we can't change things.
Can I just make a suggestion that we. Maybe listen to the next meeting or meeting.
Right, I'll agree to that.
Okay.
Turn on what a day to motion.
Think about it.
Okay, so. But I wanna make sure that I am understanding you guys correctly, so if you table this, what you're wanting to do is are bring back.
Before?
And 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 a moratorium extension.
Before it expires, bring it back at the next meeting. Um and and look into.
And just and just strip all of the the references to sand and gravel activities.
Give it a choice.
I I think what I'm hearing.
And we can't do that.
No, I think what I'm hearing Roy say is we have to have something in place. Um that if these activities are gonna take place, someone has to be um. Basically reviewing and overseeing that, that they're done correctly, and 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 what we have in place right now does not accomplish that, correct? So that's that's why I'm saying is. Yeah, and so.
So, so so no, I need to do some research, but I don't know that we have any regulations on sand and gravel mining at the moment, and so.
I think, isn't it under the general use, land use provisions, there is some reference to sand and gravel mining?
Yes, but but are there specific regulations?
I don't know, I'd have to.
So.
I believe the regulations are through the state, so.
Well, to some extent, yes, but 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 the but the municipality also has some oversight as well, and so, and so again, and and we can't say. So we need clear directions on what to bring back to, because what we can't do is is. Come bring something back to that's not quite what you wanted.
Okay, make me a suggestion, then then then. I I I would be okay with extending the moratorium on everything until we get clarification on all of this. And if we have to go through the process of doing it, we have to go through the process of doing it, that's my thought.
I agree, so the ordinance, I mean, for the moratorium right now, the reason that we put the moratorium in place was because. Uh we didn't have that.
Correct, correct.
And so as of right now, we have big progress by hiring a consulting firm. Uh it might not seem like a lot, but that is hiring somebody and that is progress, and the threat that was identified in that moratorium is still there. And it does not impact those businesses that we already currently had in place, so as far as the sand and gravel, it should not hurt.
It it.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm right.
It does.
It, does it, like, say somebody had in town.
Correction.
What's that?
That's if you're right, we're not gonna correct it, you're right.
It was in the area, sorry.
If somebody in town uh before the moratorium already had a pit operating properly. That they can continue to do so.
So so under the current moratorium. They're not allowed to do any additional mining, now if they already have materials that have been mined.
Mine, yeah.
They can, they can transport those out of the pit, but they just can't do any additional mining, and so. If if that's not included in the moratorium, you you know, you will return to that activity. Uh which is uh probably not regulated as much as the community would like, right?
I I'd just like to clarify something that seemed like it might have been a little foggy. The state has rules and regulations. And we are obligated, no matter what we think, to enforce those minimum rules and regulations. We can go ahead and pass more stringent rules and regulations, but even if we do nothing, we are obligated to enforce the state's rules and regulations, just so. Everyone knows that, it works the same way with just about all of us, okay?
Right.
But what do we wanna do for?
So so my understanding is that. The whole reason for this moratorium was so that we could fully, sorry, I gotta cover my mic, it's really loud in here. So that um we could fully develop the ordinance to regulate these types of activities now. I think the biggest concern with these types of activities was not existing gravel pits. Um and and those gravel pits are subject to certain rules, like the the setback rules that we have for all land use, the. Uh neighborhood, the sound ordinance and all that stuff. Um but the only thing the ordinance serves to do, I mean, the only thing the moratorium serves to do is to to stop all that. As you said, unless they've already already had piles of dirt, which they've all been excavating their piles of dirt, which was within their right to do. And um I I feel like. We have to allow some form of the business to continue forward, because otherwise we're impeding. Our own community's ability to. Conduct commerce. Um but in as far as safety and regulations go, I think the moratorium needs to focus specifically on blasting and mining excavation. And for that, we can come back on the twenty fifth and redo. A a moratorium that excludes sand and gravel, we don't have to extend the moratorium as it's written today. Um we can come back on the twenty fifth and redo that, that's my understanding, Anthony, is that is that about right?
That's right.
What I would like to see. Okay, we have, get a lot of the podium, we'll start comments from the public on this particular issue. Thank you, appreciate it, uh I I guess just some technical comments uh in in dealing with all of this, there are six sand pits. In our neighboring neighboring town of Monmouth, so they don't, folks really don't have to travel too far to get their sand and gravel, there's no moratorium in place in Monmouth. That's five miles away, as far as lies. How many sand and gravel pits are affected in Winthrop because of this ordinance? I I know of one maybe, and it's and it's a part-time pit off Turkey Lane. I think Larry Merrifield runs the place, so I'm not aware of any other standing gravel pits are affected by this, so. Again, I don't think it's holding up construction, the code enforcement office would be able to, to give us a, give us a read on that, it's it's. We're late to game here, folks, you know, we're we're down to one meeting left. To to try to, you know, reassemble the pieces of the puzzle that you've you you've put together, so my concern is is. And and even if we, even if we vote for this tonight, right, to extend the moratorium. The town manager's already telling us it's gonna be another five months or Katie Cott, excuse me, is telling us it's gonna be another five months, we're running out of runway. So so we've gotta put some technical priority on this to get this done, it is affecting some some businesses. Uh I'm sure it is, you know, there's this cost of diesel to to get stuff. Back in town, uh there are some piles, I know they've been hauling off Turkey lanes and stuff, that's all been established, and again, for that, you know, we're not. We're not gonna be splitting hairs about that, you know, there's there's no mining being done as far as, as far as we know, that's a consistent file, so. So business is continuing, uh but but we really need, again, my my. Looking back at this over the last year that we've been working this, one of the major concerns of the planning board. With sand and gravel was where where how high the water table was, and there was some resistance on some of the operators to put test wells in place. We don't wanna start polluting the aquifers in town. And that, again, when you get somebody from, you know, high ranking official from from the, you know, the US Geological Department telling you that. You know, we need test wells and everybody's saying, no, we don't need any test wells, uh that's a concern for sand and gravel. I I understand that the industry itself is is fairly benign to some extent, as long as there's not too much crushing going on. Uh but again, if Greg was was really concerned about this. On the planning board, that's what kinda kinda helped the the last part of it out. Uh so again, I I would I would ask you to to reconsider trying to parcel this out and and piece it out and and trying to, you know. Hack it up for for lack of a better language, so so thank you, thank you very much for listening, appreciate it.
And I agree with what Gil said, I I think that. Um looking at this, we probably need to do it right, and let's just, I I would just be in favor of a moratorium on all right. Right here. Till we get something in place, and I now that I know that there's only one part-time gravel pit, it's not a widespread issue.
Right.
So.
And he is correct, there are plenty of.
Yeah, to be to be quite honest, more importantly, the water table, if that's affected, that's huge. That's where I'm concerned, so.
Well, I, you know, in all honesty, I'm remembering. Digging out of the pit, moving on, had a best cook. No one's open over there, and we were at the water table, nobody was watching. You know, I kept moving around looking for something, but there's no water and I planned not to be done, you know, so we do need.
All right, call a question.
It's what?
Call the question.
The part of the water table at this point, yeah.
Okay, so. Uh item one fifty seven, consideration of extending the moratorium mineral exploitation, mineral extraction, rock quarry excavation, sand and gravel pit activities. Everyone say more?
So so we do have a moment and a second.
Okay, is there a second? And we're in discussion, okay, then the vote, all in favor? Okay, what do we got from Elizabeth?
No.
Okay, and I don't know. Okay, so we have Linda in favor. Which.
Oh, and then.
Linda in favor, uh Shannon in favor, Roy in favor, Elizabeth and myself, no.
Okay, so we did not get four votes for the moratorium, so it does not pass. So we will have to take another shot at this on the twenty fifth. And so. Again, I wanna make sure that we bring something to the council that we can get four votes for.
To be quite honest, we're gonna have other people at the council meeting on that on that day, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm not gonna change my vote. Um how I'm going, because. From what I just heard, the concern about the water table. Uh and I'm just not, there's only, like I said, it's a part one part-time pit right here. Um that's operating part-time, um but I. I don't know if the impact is gonna be huge, hugely substantial, so for me, I'm not gonna change my vote, so. We'll just have to have a few more people here on the twenty fifth, so.
My my suggestion is to bring back a a proposal for a moratorium that does not include. The sand and gravel in terms of suspending sand and gravel, but. With regulation in there to make sure that it's meeting town minimum setbacks, et cetera. Um so that would be my suggestion, I think it's wrong to say that you're. Not gonna change your vote, Linda, because you always have to consider new information, like if there were new information that. That sand and gravel pits were horribly dangerous and were clogging up somebody's well nearby, then I would definitely vote for the moratorium for that purpose. Um that would be new information that I would have to consider, but um I think that that is something that we should augment for the next meeting.
Yeah, I just don't see my vote, change my vote, so.
So what what I would like to see happen is uh the question on the twenty fifth is do we wanna do this entire moratorium? Or do we wanna suspend the moratorium on the sand and gravel excavation until a full new ordinance is done?
I I think, I think we, if you wanna do. In in my opinion, if you wanna do your amendment, then you do an amendment, but I don't see us spending the amount of money that it's gonna cost to do. An amended version of this, because I'm not gonna change my vote, and I don't know about Rory or about Shannon, whether they're gonna change their votes. So. You're preempting what you potentially think the council will do in terms of, well, we can have this on. We can have this little amended version over here. I mean, if if you wanna vote on the twenty fifth. To take the sand and gravel out. Then Anthony can have that drafted probably the next day. And have it ready to vote.
Well, so so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna work with the attorney, we're gonna bring two versions to you, and hopefully one of those will get four votes, and one of them is just as this documented tonight. The other will just strip out all the sand and gravel activities out of it. Uh we find the big number, but uh it would make. It would be productive to just go through the whole process of a whole new ordinance, because it's gonna do the same thing that this extension would do to begin with. And you're only taking up, and you're taking up another month in order to do that between you doing, by the time you post all the public notices and legal notices. And have the public hearing, it's gonna take at least two council meetings in order to get another ordinance done, so we'll return the two two versions of this and. And hopefully one of those will get four votes.
Okay, so if we have a motion to table?
Uh we don't need one at this point.
Yeah, fail to. Hey.
Right.
Something hopefully a little less divisive, item one fifty eight, discussion of vacation and sick leave policy.
All right, so I shared with you guys previously the vacation policy that I was planning on presenting here tonight. And then one of our council members uh suggested me, hey, have we considered, instead of having vacation in sick time, if we just had paid time off? And I said, I said, well, no, that's not something that we actually have considered, and before I went any further with. Vacation policy or a different sick leave policy, I wanted your thoughts about paid time off to see if we should pursue, be, return some. Alternative track here, now for those of you who may not be familiar with paid time off, you still accrue and earn your paid time off. But there's no distinction between sick leave and vacation time, so let's say that you're accruing. Two days, three days a month, you can use that time however you want to, whether it's. A hundred percent vacation or a hundred percent sick time, there's no distinction uh between the two of those. And there are some advantages of that, one is it relieves the employer from having to police. People for whom they suspect are abusing their sick leave, so you're out of that business altogether, because people could use the 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 time however they want. We could potentially limit some of the financial liability of the payouts, that is, right now, at a hundred percent of vacation time. Fifty percent of what someone earns on their uh on their sick leave, and and so what you would do is you would set some sort of a cap. that would probably be less than paying out both my full expenses. So that so that would limit some of your your liability. For your healthy healthier uh, employees, the benefit is they get they get more vacation time because they can use some some of their more of their time for vacation as opposed to a limited amount of vacation time plus your sick time. And it is a simpler accounting uh, for the employer as well, not having to keep track of two different um, types of leave. The most significant disadvantage is if your employees are not supportive of this change. And I've talked to all of our directors about this and it's been a mixed bag as far as some of them saying, I think that would be fine and I don't see any issue with it. And others typically who've been with us longer, who uh, are really attached to their sick leave and uh, at some future point are counting on some sort of payout regarding their sick leave. If we were to go to this model, one of the good things, I know some of you had questions about under the personnel policy, you can accrue up to seven hundred and twenty hours of sick leave. I know some of you have had concerns about that, about that length of time. The benefit of that is it does provide a safety net for someone who suffers some sort of catastrophic illness or or injury. And so, you know, God forbid, one of our employees comes down with a serious case of cancer and they're going to be out for months. That if they have seven hundred and twenty hours, that's a that's three months worth of uh, of time and provides somewhat of a safety net. So if we were to do away with that, I would want us to very seriously consider offering short and long-term disability insurance at low to no cost to employees. Just to provide that that same sort of level of a safety net. Having said that, one of our employees had a spouse who who had that insurance. And and by the way, that is currently offered as a supplemental insurance, but the cost is completely to the uh, to that to the employee at this point. So, you know, the downside of that is I have heard it from at least one of our employees who said that their spouse had to draw long-term disability and it was much more of a headache having to deal with the insurance company getting that approved by the insurance company. So, but again, get back to the sort of the initial point. Um, I want I want y'all's input before I spend any more time or effort on vacation sick leave policies. And then I get to the table and someone says, oh, no, we should be considering paid time off. And, you know, there are four or five others of you say, yeah, that's exactly what we should be doing. So I want to make sure that we're uh, using our time efficiently.
I think I just want to put in the fact that we had discussed this before in terms of vacation time is important because it's important for people to take off on their vacations. Um, and if they're using all of their paid time off for their vacations, then what happens if they get sick? So um, I think it's important to keep them separate only for that reason because uh, we've already seen what happens when someone doesn't take a vacation. And then they get stressed out and leave. Um, so I think it's important to encourage employees to use vacation time for that purpose.
That's.
Any other comments, Linda?
I do, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello.
How are you, man?
I am well, how are you?
Great.
So a couple of things I wanted to mention in regards to this is, first of all, it's only going to affect your non-union employees initially because all of our union employees have a contract and their sick time and vacation time is dictated in the union contract. Second of all, since the earned paid leave law came into effect, any employee can use up to forty hours of their sick time as earned paid leave for whatever purpose they want to use it for. Um, I know that we're looking at capping and that policy currently does have that capping in there. And so even though we are allowed to accumulate up to seven hundred and twenty hours of sick time, we get paid only half of our wage. So basically, we get paid three um, three hundred and sixty of those hours out. Those of us that chose to take short-term income protection do pay for it ourselves. We had looked at long-term um, disability and that is completely has to be supported by the town and paid for by the town. Currently, those of us that do have income protection and pay for it ourselves, the one disadvantage or advantage, whichever way you want to look at it, is that if we do file a claim, it's tax-free income to us because we have paid the premium, the town hasn't. Food for thought.
Yeah, it does make a good point about initially this would apply only to the non-union employees. I suspect it'd be something that would be negotiated in future union contract. But the same would be true about the plans to sort of, if you would liberalize the the vacation policy to allow people to earn vacation quicker um, earlier in their career at a faster rate. That would initially only apply to uh, to the non-union employees. But eventually, the unions will catch up to that. In fact, uh, we're prepared to have a first discussion about the EMS contract. That's the next union contract that that comes up next next summer.
What are the others of?
Uh, the year after that.
Two years after that, this is the first year in the the um, this, I'm sorry, this is the second year. No, this is the first year of the union contract for the police. No, you're right, it's the first, yeah, never mind. They've still got two full years left of the union contract for the police and the general unit.
Does anyone else have a comment that threw into Shannon?
One other comment I would make, Andy, if it's okay.
Sure.
Is it it's not going to be easier for bookkeeping if I have paid time off for some people and I have unions that our unions right now, the the EMS union contract, when it was negotiated, whoever picked out the pieces of the general unit and the police unit didn't pick out the right pieces. And we already have a difference in the accrual between the ambulance contract and the other two contracts. So if we throw paid time off in the mix, then I'm going to have more variance to play. My own personal opinion is I'd like to see us just redo the vacation and sick policy. And then if we're going to do anything, start it with the unions and then pick up with the employees.
Do you mean in ten years, Bernice?
Well, no, we could start it with EMS because this is already different than the the.
That if you do that, you're still going to have, you're still going to be accountable for two different systems. If you address it that way.
You're going to be either way, but but we already have two different, three different right now. So if you're going to throw another one in there, because there are a lot of differences between our personnel policy and any one of the union contracts.
So be would be leave things as they are, seem to keep for these seven at least. And uh, I I already met him once, I don't want that to happen again. And uh, and uh, but I would like the suggestion that Anthony threw at me about um, being able to uh, give sick time or vacation time to other employees.
I'd like to say, if we move forward with vacation and sick leave policies, then that would be part of a subsequent sick leave policy proposal. But couldn't we do that separately? I mean, we just do that.
The the police contract does include that. They do have a bank that they can contribute to.
I I want to be systematic about it. I I don't want to, I don't want to do a piecemeal like we're going to do a sick leave policy. Let's do a sick leave policy that addresses the sick leave bank as opposed to sick leave and sick bank and vacation. So I don't want to be systematic about it.
Any other comment? Okay, there's no motion called or at this point.
Hold on, I got a comment.
I would go for it.
So what kind of uh, the PTO as far as overall paid time off? What kind of numbers numbers would you propose?
I don't even know at this point, but but if you're, so you're talking about a cap?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so it would be something less than two eighty plus thirty six, which is what, six forty? It'd be something less than that. If if you're if you're looking to reduce your.
Okay, three sixty.
Your liability.
Half of the.
Right.
But remember too, if you've got unions that are getting that, it's not fair for your department heads to have less than what your union employees are getting.
Well, well, we already, we actually do already have that because one of the union contracts calls for eight hundred uh, a maximum hours.
But you're talking with the paid time off, it's going to be even less than that.
Have we compared uh, this, and I know it's two separate worlds before I get my head chewed off. Have we compared these types of numbers to what's happening out in the corporate world, private sector?
We don't work for the private world in the corporate sector, we work for the municipal.
Let the councilman finish.
Bear my head get chewed off.
No, it was just a, it it's just.
Let the councilman finish, please.
So have we compared to, you know, like uh, like anything on the private sector? I mean, th- those numbers to me at seven hundred and twenty hours and uh, two hundred and what is it, forty or two hundred and eighty hours, those seem quite substantial. And uh, I I like the idea with a paid time off to reduce the overall uh, potential of a payout for the town. I just don't think, you know, I I've done a little talking to some people out in the world that deal with uh, that that work in different places and a lot of places don't pay any sick time. They had, they allow accumulation time, but when when the termination comes, you know, somebody leaves their position, they don't get paid, they get paid zero sick time, there's nothing paid out at all. So um, you know, I I think that we need to kind of get in check with a lot of the other, even even look at other municipalities and and.
Other municipalities, I agree.
So so I would say that it's kind of all over the map. Boy, I mean, we could, we could, you know, we could uh, look at other municipalities and see, but that, you know, there's a there's a thousand different ways to spin this down.
Okay, can I jump in now? Um, I'd like to, Bernice, to be able to finish any of the comments she may have or have had.
No, I'm all set, but I'm not going to, I I don't see the benefit of comparing other outside agencies. Those of us that are working for municipal government are working for municipal government. If I want to go to work for corporate government, I'll go see, or for corporations or whatever, I'll get hired on with those benefits. Those of us that work for municipal got hired on with what we have. And I and I think that whether it be right, whether it be wrong, to your unions are going to fight tooth and nail to lose any benefits that what they have. And for your department heads to, at at my experience with unions has always been, you're lucky if your department heads get what the unions get. So to think that the department heads are going to get less than what your union members are getting, it it doesn't set a good precedence, in my opinion.
Thank you. Okay, any further comments on this issue? I want to get out of this.
I've been looking for direction here and I don't have any. So so the question is, do we want to just have a separate vacation and sick leave policy? Or do we want to look at paid time off?
I think.
I just want to make sure I'm using my time wise.
I would like to look at uh, you know, what is happening elsewhere in the world and as far as total amount of hours, particularly the total amount of hours that would potentially pan out. Um, and I think that uh, it would be nice to see some numbers, you know, some potential paid time off numbers um, and have some initial conversations with uh, see how well it's accepted. And I mean, there are, as I understand, there are some benefits to it, but it's not all bad.
Yeah, I I mean, I agree, I I think we ought to look at what, you know, municipalities, but also what other businesses are doing up there. I mean, it's not, it doesn't matter, I mean, benefits are benefits, but I mean, that's an enormous amount of carryover that you have there, a lot of carryover. And paid time paid time off, whether folks want to use it as sick time or vacation time, I don't care. I mean, to be quite honest, if you're healthy and you want, you know, how many weeks of vacation? I would rather take that than than have, you know, I'm not sick that much. But I mean, personally, it's, you know, it's up, it's up to the individual, I can do either or. I wouldn't think that they would want that um, to use potential sick time as vacation time instead of just having to have it used as sick time. That's just my, I I think that, you know, I would rather see them be able to use it, you know, either or.
I think, I I don't think that payout at the end of the termination should be used as a uh, as a bank. I don't, I don't think that's what it's designed for.
Right.
And uh, in a tentative form, and I don't think that it should be, you know, if if the, with the paid time off, if we're reducing that liability in the town, but still providing, you know, the vacation time and sick time to the employees, I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, and there are other ways to do that. I mean, you could, you could, you could reduce or eliminate how much is being paid out for 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 any of your sick time. I mean, that's another way to to reduce the liability and still provide the benefit of the safety net and sick time is is meant to be.
And we have to keep in mind too, that we keep calling it sick time, but it doesn't just cover when you're sick. It could cover you slipping on the ice and breaking your ankle and having to be out for surgery. It it's not just about being sick, you could be the healthiest person in the world, but if someone hits you with their car and you end up in the hospital for two weeks, you're going to need that quote unquote sick time. Uh, the other thing is, was it you, Bernice, that said that when some people leave under the sick time, they get half the value of their sick time, or is that just?
They can accumulate seven hundred and twenty hours, but they don't get paid the full rate. Uh, if they're making twenty dollars an hour, they're going to get ten dollars an hour times that seven hundred and twenty hours.
When they leave.
When they leave, but.
Okay.
Yes, so so some of us that haven't been here for thirty years, like some of us have been, we didn't use it much vacation time during COVID. I mean, that's part of the reason why there are some of us that have more time. And and the sick time, we were given some extra sick time for COVID when it was around. So we weren't using the regular sick time that we had.
You know.
Just going to ask another question related to sick time, but more so short-term and long-term disability and how that kind of plays into it. So that way, when you're sick, whereas like in Elizabeth's case, if you slip and fall on the ice, then you get short-term disability first, so when you're sick, you're sick and that gets covered. And then your um, uh, vacation time is vacation time.
So so Elizabeth is exactly right, it's called sick leave, but it it could be for an injury or or it could be for even for something that happens to one of your nuclear family members. And so uh, and so typically with short and long-term disability, you're you're asked to exhaust any sick leave that you have before that short and long-term disability, et cetera.
So that would.
Not true.
Use your vacation time as well.
Well, I was looking at it, I was looking at a contract just today, uh, Bernice, for that, that seemed to be the case.
If if it's an accident, you don't have to use any of your time at all, it's from day one. If it's for sickness, it's after the first seven days. If you've, if you've got income protection, it picks up after the, it picks up at the minute you get injured for an accident, it picks up after the seventh day if you're out for sickness.
Would that, would would you, that is that, would that be mandated if it was all paid time off? I mean, they wouldn't have to exhaust all of their paid time off if they had to.
I mean, those are, those would be rules that we'd have to determine.
That may actually be a benefit.
Yeah, so one of the things with the contract, the union contract I was studying today is there is a clause in that contract is for EMS providers that requires everyone to use at least half of their vacation time each year. And no more than half to carry over and then and then the cap is two hundred and eighty hours. And so, you know, it struck me as interesting that if we move forward with the vacation policy, that may be a way to encourage people to take their vacation and discourage them from just carrying over, you know, a large amount each year and then and then hold true to the cap. So so it just occurred to me, if we move more than that sort of way, that's a way that we might be able to to encourage people to take vacation, which is what we want because it's good for them, right? It's good for the organization.
It's not a bank, it's for vacation.
Exactly.
But there have been times too, you got to remember that we've not been able to take vacations. I mean, I've only been here for three years and I've three of those years that I, well, almost four years. Of two of those years, there's been COVID. Of two of those years, there's been COVID. So where could I go, what could I do, and the sick time that I used when I did get COVID, we were granted extra sick time to cover for that timeframe, so I didn't have to use my sick time. As far as the income protection is concerned, I fell back in July and hit my head and had a concussion, was out of work for two weeks. I used my sick time to pay myself. I'm going to put a claim into my income protection, but it wasn't immediate, and I still haven't heard anything from that. So we do use our sick time for other things besides illnesses.
Thank you for bringing that up, because I was gonna mention that the paycheck protection insurance is not always very quick to pay.
It's not quick at all, actually. You have to get your doctor to sign off, you have to get your employer to sign off, and then there has to be several conversations with the doctor before they'll even consider your case.
Okay.
And I want, what I'm, I'm in favor of, I mean, if you're looking at the sick time, they include sick leave and what we, our payout is, we can always speak that, so like, what Anthony says is they have, you know, they have, have it there if they need it, if they're sick, but we don't pay out. We're encouraging them and them not to accumulate it. And if, but if they wanna accumulate it in case something happens, they've got it there, but we're not gonna pay out even fifty percent.
I agree.
So.
I think that you'd have to grant grandfather some of your employees that have already here. My opinion.
Uh, we could be, uh, it's all night. No offense to anyone, um, I would suggest that we ask Anthony, um, possibly with the help of his executive secretary, we can move with you soon. You you did come, didn't you?
On here.
Oh, yeah, uh.
But but let's be clear, she is not my secretary.
Establishly, please.
Executive assistant?
Yeah, there we go.
There we go, I got it right finally. You should have heard Rebecca, oh, Anthony, last week, you know, I did it all, um, so, but just try to just come up with some concrete type scenarios for us to look at, send them out in emails, and we can all think about them.
And look at what other municipalities.
So hopefully, yeah, so hopefully we can uh next time we have this discussion, we can get it accomplished a little more efficiently, give you some direction.
Okay, well, I think that would, I mean, if we're looking towards, you know, tweaking the sick leave policy having, you know, something different for a vacation policy, I think we've already got a good start on at least the the latter.
Yeah, well, I mean, I.
Can I just interject a a a a qualifier here? Usually with sick time, and and by the way, I will include in that mental health days, because there are people who sometimes need a mental health day. Um, those don't require notice, whereas a vacation time usage, do you need a sick time, do you need a sick day? Linda, um, so so vacation time requires notice, whereas sick time does not require notice, and that's a big designation between those two.
However, as I understand it, paid time off would not require a notice, correct?
Right, which makes it a lot harder to run a a municipality.
There you go.
Well, these are all things that, based on that, uh alert us to, and they give us different scenarios. But, uh so, um, yeah, let's move on, please, um. Okay, item one fifty nine, discussion and consideration of calling budget matters. Am I going to attack your family or something?
No.
Okay.
No.
Just checking. All right, um carry forwards from the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, in the following amounts, who wants to take this over?
I'll take it over.
Um so just read these, you mean? All right, carry forwards, um the fiscal year, um, and this is just carrying forward the amount, why is this, why is that going?
Andy's your thing.
No, my job.
Okay, now.
Kind of got me trained.
Um I guess my question is, this is just carry forwards on all these accounts that we're just carrying forward into the um surplus.
That that is, that is, well, it's to carry forward to to spend for these particular purposes right here, so.
But that's what we, what we plan.
Budget.
That's right.
Yeah, it was, it was, yeah, it was budgeted last year, so so the only, the only figure that's made one's quibble about, Roy and I talked about this uh last week is the two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for administrative services uh to use towards the town hall lane paving, so we got a bid from um, Allstate for a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Now, I would suggest that we have some contingency with that, just in case they encounter something that we're not expecting, or if they have to finish their paving in the spring and asphalt prices increase, then we got a cushion there. So the question, so how do you do that, and there's a couple of different options, you can approve this figure from administrative budget uh services budget with the caveat that whatever is not spent is then returned to the uh unspent assigned to fund balance for capital reserve, so, um, so that way, you're using it for some other future capital need. Uh, or you could set it at, let's say, ten percent of of the hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar contract, so an additional seventeen thousand dollars or eighteen thousand dollars. And then if we need more, then we could come back to you regarding using some of those uh
Additional funds.
Additional funds uh for the unspent assigned to uh to fund balance for the capital reserve, so that's two different ways that you could, you could approach that.
I like the ten percent on that one. Me, I do have a question on one of the other ones. The, now, is the twenty-five hundred dollars in transfer station budget to complete the bathroom project, is this an additional twenty-five hundred dollars that we, that's over the top of the budget? Like above all the contingencies and
that I do not know, because I don't know how much was budgeted for that project, do you happen to know, Bernice?
There was sixty-some thousand, I can't remember the exact figure, that was budgeted in capital to put the bathroom in up to the transfer station to be put by this scale shaft. There has been a long time since that project was started, and as we all know, everything has gone up, so they needed additional twenty-five hundred dollars to finish that project over and above what we put aside for capital.
Well. But, you know.
I'm sorry?
Wasn't that, uh, bid out as a, as a job? As a complete job by Montrax?
Sit down, change, go toilet and.
I don't believe, I believe we, we had a heck of a job finding anybody to build it at all, Roy. And the cost of the materials and things that have gone up since the project was started.
I will back that up, that is what happened.
Yeah, we, I know he had an awful job finding anybody to do this, and there was finally one person that said, yes, they could do it, but they couldn't do it until X day. And they are working on it now, but they're gonna run short of funds to finish the project.
Which year?
Sorry?
Was it budgeted, was it budgeted last year, in last year's budget?
It was budgeted in the twenty-three year, yes.
Okay.
If I may comment, it's, it's much, I mean, I'm liking, at this point, we're, we're fine enough down the road that I I'm not sure we are gonna accomplish anything by denying that money to get it finished, I mean, I'd, I'd like to.
No, I just. That's all.
Just like you, but, you know.
I just like, my only question is not whether we needed to finish it, because we're not gonna leave the roofing off, man, or anything like that, is the accounting of it, where, you know, where did the was just in, the overall cost of the project went up, or one particular piece of it went up, or something forgotten, or what was? That's my only question.
I think it was a cost of run really basically, so.
If I recall, the cost of everything went up before we were able to finally get somebody to go in and actually do the work, that was the problem. The cost of labor, the cost of supplies, the cost of excavation, everything went up, so.
It seems to be.
A lot of it themselves.
It seems to be there was an increased cost with getting the connection down to the facility as well. The water and the sewer down to it.
All right, I make a motion that we, um, carry forward from fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, the following amounts, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for plenty more budget to pay for GIS mapping by KT POG, twenty-five hundred for the transfer station budget to complete the bathroom project, ten thousand seven hundred from the police department budget for building maintenance, eleven thousand six hundred and forty from the fire department budget to fund uh retirement obligations, um, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for the administrative ser- services budget for town hall lane paving, and the move to carry, move to approve and carry forwards from fiscal year, um, twenty twenty-three budgets presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is seconded by Elizabeth? Oh, in favor? Elizabeth?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Two absent.
All right, this next item is just to formalize what you approved in the budget, uh, our auditor wanted to see a motion uh about the two hundred thousand dollars in ARCA funds being used to replace the, the library's elevator.
I'll move to approve the, uh, appropriate in two hundred thousand federal ARCA funds for replacing the library's elevator.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, seconded by Roy, all in favor?
Aye.
Let the record show all that are present, are in favor, two absent.
In this last portion of this mo- of this item is assigning uh nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars uh fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three surplus funds to the town's assigned fund balance for capital reserve, so so what this money represents is revenues that were above what was uh budgeted and expenditures that were below, but were not carried forward into this year's budget. And so largely, that's a function of of revenues at this point, more than, more than expenditures. And so what this does, it gives us the golden opportunity to consider how we're gonna use those funds, put them to the best public use for capital items moving forward, and Bernice and I have already talked about this, about, you know, reestablishing some capital reserves uh for things like public works and police and fire. Uh, but one of the things that Bernice pointed out, uh, and there's some wisdom to this, is you know, maybe we end up wanting to dedicate all of that to the radio upgrade program that Chief Burman has told us about, that was a couple of years estimated to cost one point two million dollars, and so we know we're gonna have to finance that, and so having something like this would help us um as far as making a bid and 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 having to finance uh less, but we're not suggesting any of those things tonight, what we'd like to do is go ahead just have this assigned uh to be fund bound for capital reserve, and then let us have some internal talk and come back to you in November with uh some suggestions about how you might uh appropriate those funds.
So this is the, this is extra money that we basically received.
That's correct.
I'm not, to me, I'd rather see this going to surplus right now. I'm, I'm not, you know, you got we, we can have discussions about capital improvements or whatever, and, you know, I don't have a problem with that, but I have a problem moving this immediately, that's almost a million dollars into capital reserves without having thorough discussions about it.
Well, so one of the reasons, one of the reasons, though, Linda, that we're uh proposing this is because if you left this in the uh undesigned fund, it would be well above what's, what the uh, the amount is established by our fund balance policy. So our fund balance policy says twenty percent of the prior year's budget, and so we're already, this, this would be in excess of that, and so that's why we're proposing moving this into capital reserves, where again, we can make some good public use of these dollars that have already been collected.
And that's why I'm, I want it in, personally, I'd rather have it in the reserves, because it's not to say that some of this money is gonna be spent on capital. Um, I, I, I think that, per, I personally, I, I get the twenty percent, and I get, you know, we're this is exceeding what we're supposed to be having in there for surplus, but I still we can always take it from surplus and put it into capital. But I like the discussion, I don't wanna completely say we have to do capital with this money. So my, my opinion is, we put it in surplus, and then we have a discussion about the capital, about capital projects, and then we come back and um, we talk about it.
We need Bernice's input, she's got her hand up.
Yeah, so either Bernice or or our town manager, what is the legality of just putting it into the surplus?
You can definitely do that.
You folks you folks adopted a a policy for a fund balance policy uh with that, with the understanding that we would keep twenty percent of the prior year's budget in undesigned fund balance. The twenty percent gets us through, basically, when we start collecting tax dollars. What we're asking is to de, to to put this as assigned for capital reserve, or or just assign it, period, so that it doesn't remain in the undesigned fund balance, that it becomes assigned. You folks can assign it to whatever you want to later on, as Anthony said, but if you're gonna follow your fund balance policy, the fund balance policy says, leave the twenty percent there. If there is over and above that, you move it out for capital reserve, that's what the fund balance policy says.
Yeah. The reason that we're recommending this is this, what we're trying to do is save up for future needs, so we are less reliant on financing moving forward, and so, a- again, there, we could, we could do what Bernice suggested uh and dedicate, you know, the bulk of this to the radio upgrades for our uh police dispatch, or we could split it up, and we could, you know, set aside a little bit for that next ladder truck uh for the fire department, or set aside enough where we're just paying cash for cruisers. Uh, I mean, there's a lot of different ways to go about that, we just, we just wanna come back with a recommendation so that we can do that strategically um, in a way that makes good use of these public dollars.
Well, in my opinion, if you're gonna come back with that, I wanna see all of the capital we had it done budget, but I don't, I wanna see all the capital improvements proposed that we proposed in last budget, and 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 how they were assigned, what years they were assigned to, because I wanna know, I don't want something, wow, I'm not spending, voting to spend money on something that's not within those guidelines.
Yeah, I totally agree with.
We're not asking to spend it, we're asking to assign it so that it doesn't stay in the undesigned fund balance, so when people pick up our audit, they see that, oh, well, they've got their twenty percent in their undesigned fund balance, but they've got this additional money that they've set aside and are assigning it for X, whatever the X is can be determined later. But the auditors are going to be here this week, which is why Anthony and I put this together, to come up with what that number would be. So that we could say, yep, we've got our twenty percent now, which is, I mean, a great huge step, as you know, we haven't been there for a long while, and now we've got extra that we can put aside for it doesn't have to be designated for anything in particular right now, except a generic capital. And when that money gets moved, you folks make that decision of where it gets moved to.
Thank you very much, Bernice, uh, the chair will get a gentleman.
I'd like to move to approve the signing of nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and eighteen cents in fiscal year twenty twenty-three surplus funds to the town's assigned fund balance for capital reserves.
Is there a second?
I'll second if we can use it for the banks, then.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? It, let the record show that all present or in favor, including Elizabeth, I assume? Still there?
Uh, I think she's frozen.
She's frozen, okay, well, we have a floor. Okay, so let the record show that Linda, uh, myself, Shannon, and Roy are in favor of that. Okay.
So we did one, one last item about that that failed to mention, we still have about two hundred thousand dollars left in ARCA funds that have not yet been appropriated, so again, we wanna have some internal discussions and maybe come back with a recommendation to you guys about how we might appropriate those, because they have to be appropriated by the end of next year, and they have to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-six, so there is a little bit of a, a time clock ticking there.
Okay, item, thank you, item one sixty, consideration of residents not leveraging the town to establish investment accounts at Tennebec Savings Bank, and while resident town treasurer Anthony Wilson and finance director Bernice Williams to accept and make decisions regarding those funds and requiring that they be authorized to transfer funds from those accounts. Chair will entertain a motion.
Oh, I have a question.
Let, let me get a motion, then a second, and then comments. To get the procedure going here, the way we say, chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the resolution, I've been done.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for.
Okay, um, all right, and then, uh, discussion.
When you say in the, investment accounts, are you just talking about? When you say in the investment accounts, are you just talking about savings accounts? And I guess my other thing, question is because. Um, do you currently have surplus monies in any type of CD accounts? Or, you know, money market accounts that generate more money than just the percentage?
Yes, we have, uh, the general fund money is in a market, a money market right now. And we did just talk with the bank and did get the interest rate on that increased. There are some CDs out there, but as you know, we're getting ready to put a request out for services. So we didn't wanna tie up our money. In a possibly a bank that we don't go with um, for any amount of time right now. And this money particularly that we're talking about right now, Linda, is the money that the scholarships and the cemetery trust fund is in. It's in Kennebec Savings in an investment account. It's a true investment account. But they needed to have um. Jeff's name removed, obviously, and have Anthony's name added to it. And why we had to do this whole thing all over again, I'm not sure. But this is what they wanted to be able to put Anthony's name on the account.
And I guess the other question, what, what, what rate did we get?
Three point two, I think it was.
Three point two?
We were getting point nine.
So, so this is why we're putting our banking services down for bid is.
I was gonna say, like, we should probably.
We're not, we're not, we're not completely satisfied with the rates. Uh, and uh, the response on this.
So Ben, can you tell me where you're at?
We're currently banking with Danny Rose Company.
And Kennebec.
Into the, oh, how does this play into the banking RFP that we have? Is this, is this affected by that at all?
It is, so, so our trust funds are included in the banking services RFP. But we have given ourselves a leeway depending upon the responses that we get. And we may wanna break different pieces out to different uh, institutions. And so it might be that we decide to have our checking and operating in sweep accounts and money market accounts with one bank. We keep our trust funds with uh, with the different banks. So we give ourselves plenty of leeway in that regard. And and just to reiterate something that Bernice said. I mean, we're talking about trust funds here. Uh, this, these investments don't have anything to do with CDs.
No, but I just wondered if you could purchase CDs with some of the, you know, the twenty percent that we have as a, as a.
So that is in the services RFP, we, we have included uh, CDs and CDRs to, to make sure that, that we have that option.
Anything we've got right now, Linda?
Right now, they're five percent.
As it explained to me, what we're doing in KSB right now is just, it's smaller local accounts for convenience sake.
Uh, well, and we have uh, two accounts with Kennebec Savings, these trust fund accounts and then essentially uh, an account for, for. For cash transactions.
Right. Okay. Yeah, we do need to vote. All in favor? Okay, Elizabeth?
She's no longer with us.
Okay, she's down again. Okay, let the rec- record show.
I'm here, I vote yes. I just had trouble getting to the bottom.
Let the record show that Elizabeth, five, that five are in favor, all that are present.
Hey, Elizabeth, we didn't get your vote on the last one. Were you supportive of the, the last item?
He's hitting out too much. We, we got through that one, but it probably other just. Yes.
All right, next. Uh, item one sixty-one, consideration of approval of the minutes of the August seventh and August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three council meeting.
I move to approve um, both the minutes of August second and twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then, uh, you wanna call vote? You, you made a motion. Practice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record, let the record show that all are in favor, all that are present, five. Okay.
Hey, all right. So, uh, one sixty-two, consideration of recommendations from the appointments committee. We need to have a brief, open discussion on this one. Bruce is not here. Uh, apparently, these haven't been discussed with Shannon. Do you have a personal on a question, Ben?
Yeah, I didn't really look at them. Uh, but we've got them included right here. And I don't have any um. Issue with uh, reappointing Ronald Taylor or Alan Pitt. They've both been members of the Winter zoning board of appeals, one since nineteen ninety-one. And um, that was Ronald Taylor. And then uh, as far as Alan Taylor.
I move, I move that we approve um, the recommendation of the appointments today, reappoint Ron Taylor. And now I get to enter the zoning board.
Is there a second? Hey, Shannon, second? All in favor? Let the record show that the fourth person is present or in favor, Elizabeth?
Yeah, I guess so. I was just gonna ask the, well, the applications that I looked at, he didn't write anything about how, why he wanted to be on the board, the newest person. I was just curious as to why he was approved by the appointment committee.
Particularly Ronald Taylor had been on the board since nineteen ninety-one, and he probably didn't.
Right, I saw that he was, right, I saw that he was a renewal, but what about the other person? He didn't, uh, it didn't say renewal or. Anything. It didn't say why he wanted to be on the committee, had absolutely no information about him.
Kind of at the top that has a, a check for renewal. So he is just a renewal of the um.
Okay, all right, this was, just wasn't checked off? Okay, that's all I had to ask. Yeah, I vote yay.
Okay, thank you. So. Oh. We did it.
Yep.
Okay, I'm losing it. All right. I know you do. You got my back. All right. Other business? What would comment? Nobody, okay? Um, my husband, your brother?
All right, so today was the first day of our new town planner, Dawn Anderson. She dug right into both our comp plan. She started. Uh, familiarizing herself with the comp plan update, to see if there's a weekend that she might be able to offer. And also our land, our zoning ordinance. She and I will be attending on Friday a downtown planning training. So we're hoping to learn a lot about that in the morning. Uh, in Garner. And then Friday afternoon, she and I and Mr. McDermott here are going to tour the. We took a tour of that place last week and uh, lots of mixed use potential there. And I thought Stephen's expertise could really come in handy. So we're gonna involve Stephen and and get Dawn, okay, to onto that place and start thinking about. About how we might be able to uh, uh, move forward on some uh, some mixed uses.
Think a little of this.
Elizabeth, did you have a comment?
Nope.
All right. And so, and so Dawn will come to our next, your next meeting on September the uh, twenty-fifth. To talk about uh, some of the priorities that are gonna be for initial programs. She also began today uh, researching uh, the law that was passed under uh, LD twenty oh three for the accessory dwelling units. You'll recall, we got that ten thousand dollar grant. That's money in the bank right now. Steve will be happy to hear. And so uh, she's already going to be researching how we can incorporate those guidelines into our zoning uh, ordinance. And uh, and is gonna be tracked in her times, we can uh, pay that time with the grant. Uh, just a reminder about, yes.
Um, and a couple of meetings back, uh, between you and I, I asked about um, Dawn's priorities. And you know, if we, if the board could have some info into that. And you said you just established with priorities, that she was hired. So is that what's gonna happen when Noah comes? We're gonna talk about the priorities, but.
Yes.
You already got that all figured out.
Well, I, we have some ideas, but we're open to your ideas as well.
So this will be good solid.
So we'll listen to your ideas and then we'll discuss them. And I'm just kidding.
And I can take a shot across the trail.
All right. Uh, so just a reminder about our comp plan timeline. Uh, I think the comp plan committee plans on presenting. Uh, a draft to the council at its October the second meeting. And then uh, initially I had said October sixteen for uh, for you to uh, vote on the plan. But remember, we actually moved that meeting back to the twenty-third. So we're looking at October twenty-third, when you will actually consider the plan and sending it forth to the voters. In the November election. But what I'm also proposing is that the week of October the ninth. That we have some sort of a public forum where we can present the plan to the public as well. Answer any questions that they may have, gather any feedback. And um. Uh, and then hopefully incorporate that into the final version if it's, if it's appropriate. So. What do you, what do you folks think about October the ninth of having just a public forum here? We like.
I think it's important.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I think it's important too, the question is, who is gonna present the plan at this point to the public?
Uh, you guys have been talking to the, to the committee, so what are your thoughts?
Well, I, I think what it's gonna boil down to, according to um, standardized last conversation. When the plan is complete, they're either gonna decide they can endorse it or not. And if they can, they can present it. And if they don't wanna endorse it. Then it will have to be of the town planner and maybe perhaps so.
Uh, well, it, it'll probably be the town manager, then Jessica Cottler from KB Cottler, cause the town planner.
Right, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, misspoke.
Yeah.
Perhaps on October second, when they do a presentation, uh, if we have a presentation with them. Well, as uh, KB Cott presenting and then whatever the council weighs in on. Then we can have a decision as far as how that presentation is gonna look on the ninth.
Yeah, on Friday night.
I thi- I think that they should definitely have a, a part in it.
Absolutely.
Um, and obviously, Sarah from KB Cott is gonna have some real good information as well and she.
Well, we, we can only go by what they said, you know, we, we kind of give that two stark choices. They, if they didn't like it, they weren't gonna endorse it. And if they liked it, they present. So we'll let them, we'll let them make that choice.
So I will, I will award the comp plan committee in that we are planning on having a, a forum on October the ninth, six o'clock. Sound good?
Okay.
Okay.
October ninth and sixth. That's gonna be the forum.
All right.
All right. And then twenty-third is the vote.
Twenty-third is the vote and.
Second is it gonna be, we're gonna do a presentation?
On October ninth, that's Columbus Day.
Is that a holiday?
Indigenous people.
Oh, it is. Indigenous people said, okay, well, let's not have that day, shall we? So is there a better day that week for you guys?
Uh, Tuesday is fine.
Tuesday is actually a lot better for me because I'm hoping to be home. I have a most pregnant. Well, you got in bowl week on October ninth.
Is that gonna be Tuesday at seven?
Seven would be better for me.
Seven, yeah. Okay.
Okay, so, to make sure we're off the same page, October second, a presentation presumably by Linda. Would you guys go, let's say, Tuesday?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, we think so.
I think it's important to have input from both.
All right. And then uh, October tenth, we have a public forum. Then October twenty-third, we'll vote.
All right, sounds good. Uh, just so you know, when I was at the town manager conference, I heard a presentation by an engineering firm that does capital planning. And so I followed up with them to say, do you guys provide this for roads? Because I think we need a systematic strategic plan for how we're going to address roads and sidewalks. I said, yes, we do. We had a discussion about that. I sent them an inventory of our roads and they're working up. A cost estimate about what that might be. So just so you know, we're, we're looking ahead at, at trying to implement some sort of plan. For how we can address our roads in the best possible manner. And so I'll be bringing that forward to you at some point, say. Is this the kind of money you and, you would uh, care to spend on this sort of planning? Then, then we can kinda go from there.
We also need to, a- as far as the sidewalks go, I know that's been a pretty hot topic. Um, there was some discussion, I think, there were budgets, budget time about the fact that the state owns Main Street. And with the sidewalks, uh, I don't know if that was related to them and how that works in the whole thing, but that might be something that they wanna. That they need to know.
Yeah, well, so how that works is, you're right, that the OT owns uh, Main Street because it's a state road, but the sidewalks are all ours. So they're not gonna help us with sidewalks. But.
Nice try, Roy.
But I, 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 you know, one of the great things about working in the village is you get to walk around downtown quite a bit. And I'm of a firm opinion that. We gotta do something about sidewalks, they are pretty painful.
Yeah.
Uh, our cloud records presented, I sent you, you guys an email, so it's up on the website and. Uh, put it on our uh, Facebook page and MMA website, so.
Have you got any vids yet?
Uh, not yet, but those typically don't come in until the eleventh hour. Yeah. So uh, so we'll, we'll see how, what that does. Uh, just a reminder, on the banking RFP, if you guys have input, please send that to me by Thursday, cause we wanna publish that on Friday, get the whole moment on that.
Did, did you send your RFP out to us?
I sent it today.
Yes. There are a couple of things on that RFP. I'll look at it real quick. Uh, dates and times and stuff that you're gonna wanna address.
Okay, well, let's talk about it.
I'll send you an email.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, and then we, as I mentioned, uh, prior to the meeting, to some of you, we received only one proposal for our RFP for revaluation. It is from our current assessor, RJD Appraisals. And so I have not even opened it yet. I was too busy today with our new planner. I'm preparing for the meeting. So that's gonna be on my to-do list um, this evening, like this week.
I talked to somebody, an assessor that, I'm trying to, an assessor, a town, town council member. That said they, they had done a, it wasn't a, it wasn't a revow. It was called it something. It was a, an adjustment to keep us out of the, to keep them out of the. Yeah. And he said it wasn't even anywhere near what a revow would be. So. Might wanna look into that.
Yeah, well, and, and you're right. So it's called factor revow. And, and they adjust everything by, let's say fifteen percent. But that has a short shelf life, because eventually then, if, if your, if your values continue to grow, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to come back and.
Can I just say, these values aren't going down. And they're just going up there. And, and again, gotta be real careful with this because. It can price everybody out of market. So.
What's, what's gonna do about the revow? They don't even have the tax plan, so they, they, you know, so that's gonna let it hang out. That would be the.
Again, I think the state's gonna have to come in and do something with this because it's getting ridiculous. It really is. I mean.
So, so, uh, you know, uh, maybe October second, I'll be bringing that for your consideration. Oh, I sent you guys some information. You want me to service the town's voting delegate at the MMA conference during their business meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. And I was listening to something this morning about uh, someone who wanted, who's already made a case to me once before about uh, licensing fee for cannabis businesses. And uh, uh, is still concerned about that. I said, I would bring that to you. So far, I think from three of you said, we're very comfortable with where they are, so.
It would be nice to have them here to discuss it.
Uh, they were invited.
As I said earlier today, this started to sound like one of those things that you could go back and forth on forever and it's. Uh, perhaps we won't ever be able to satisfy this gentleman's uh, complaints. We probably have to. You know, my answer, what's coming?
My plan was just to let them know that the council is comfortable with the, the use of the. And, and then two final things that I actually brought this up last time, but I don't know that I, I gotta firm answer about this. Our community resilience self-evaluation. Which we need to engage in as part of being, part of the community resilience program and uh, and getting those uh, with grant dollars.
How is that done? Is that done individually? Is it a group?
No, it's a group thing, but it's, but it's mostly internal. But it would, I think it would be helpful to have council members there as well. So. So if I scheduled that for um, you know, say maybe like a Tuesday in October. Do you, do you think you could accommodate that?
Yeah, I.
But just not on the tenth, we already scheduled.
Right, not on the tenth. Okay, good. And then uh, and then lastly, you know, we've updated the council rules. We still got the charter out there, but again, I, I don't know that I got clear direction from you. Is that something you wanna just put on the shelf for a while, a review of the charter? Um, I think the last time it was reviewed was two thousand seventeen. That memory serves me, maybe a little longer than that.
Yeah, maybe if everybody agrees, you can set that aside for a bit.
Yeah, it's not a priority.
You know, and there is one glitch in the council rule, since you brought something up, it's, I can't remember what it is. Um, you need to have four people to call um, an emergency meeting. And you can't very well contact four people, have a meeting of four people that decide to have an emergency meeting. Some wording is gonna change that.
I think, I think the way, the way that. I think, I think the way, the way that happens is if, if there's a need for a number, let's say the council, let's say the chair. Says, I think we need to have an emergency meeting, then the town manager contacts at least three other council members, say, hey. We think we need an emergency meeting. Are you good with that? And the four people say, yeah, then we, then we call.
Yeah, hopefully it won't be such a big emergency that we need to move faster than that.
So do you, well, if you're taxed, everything can be done pretty quickly these days. So Shannon, did you have a thought about that?
Definitely emergency was also defined by the state regulations as well, so it's not like you can just have a meeting.
Oh, definitely.
Right.
And thus, and thus concludes the town manager's report.
All right, the chair, okay, we have one moment from the public. Remember. Where are you, if I were to be called?
Hey, all, thanks. At the risk of belaboring this meeting, thanks for the original bus conversation about the moratorium earlier. I just wanted to point out that there's a aquifer that runs underneath a parcel. Where there was a project submitted for a sand and quarry pit, or the, the moratorium doesn't speak to some specific project. But the um. On the abutting properties, the wells are twelve to sixteen feet deep. So when we don't have regulations in town that regulate how deep. Uh, quarrying or mining or excavating for sand and gravel can go. It is only twelve feet before you start hitting uh groundwater in that area. So just thinking ahead to the next meeting. What the ordinance can impact for sand and gravel and why it's significant and important. So, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chair will entertain a motion to a trial.
So.
Second?
Second.
Okay, two seconds, all in favor?
I'm in favor.
Russell, what's in favor?
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, yes, that's a favor, yes.
I'll see you later.
See you, Linda.
See you later, you guys.
Bye.
Bye, Elizabeth, thank you.